To order for its February first meeting. First on the docket is going to be FI dash twenty twenty one dash zero zero two. This is a request to annex and zone to R ten residential district known as the Pine Ridge subdivision. Tax map number zero three four two zero 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 one zero zero six zero zero approximately twenty eight point seven acres on North Nelson Drive. And I believe the applicant is here online with us with Blue Water, Blue Water Civil Design, representing Mark Three Properties. She has any comments?
Yes, my name is Mackenzie Poston, here with Blue Water Civil Design. I don't have any additional comments to add right now that I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for the applicant before we move to staff? This time we'll go ahead and hear Mr. Gortos's comments.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, member of the public, thank you for being here and accommodating. Switching back over to a digital platform for Fountain and Planning Commission meeting here in February. Difficult for all of us, but we're going to get through it. This docket number is FI twenty twenty one dash zero zero two and was previously held at our January fourth, twenty twenty one Planning Commission meeting. The applicant is Mark Three Properties and the property location is at North Nelson Drive, Fairview Road. This is just south of Interstate three eighty five and of Palisades Department Complex within the city limits. The chairman read the tax map number, but the acreage is about twenty acres. Many were present for the January Planning Commission meeting, but we're in or if we have new members in the audience. This is an annexation request to join the city limits of Fountain Inn and through annexation and to request the rezoning to R ten residential district. This case is unique in that the subdivision has already preliminarily platted through Greenville County. So in other words, the subdivision layout is already been set and approved by another municipality due to its proximity to city limits and the need for fountain infrastructure. The applicant is now seeking annexation into Fountain Inn. This is about thirty acres. It would create one hundred and twelve single family residential lots that are fifty feet in width. And that is allowable under that R ten residential zoning. There's a multitude of zoning categories surrounding this property, both in city limits and in unincorporated Greenville County. The Palisades Department Complex being zoned, RM multi-family, commercial zoning districts on SC fourteen or Millican Drive being C two commercial district and others farther south on four eighteen being zoned I one industrial district. Other properties in the area are unzoned. Because this was at our previous Planning Commission meeting, the points that were brought up by both staff and commissioners were the unique circumstances of a subdivision trying to receive annexation after the design of the subdivision had already been made. The subdivision standards are lack thereof upon annexation. So the difference between a Greenville County subdivision and a city one would be the necessary inclusion of sidewalks along road frontages and the actual change in rezoning. The property as it exists today is unzoned. So a multitude of land uses or residential densities are allowed there now, and that's how this subdivision was approved. And if annexed, it would be under this R ten residential zoning category. Based on discussions with the applicant and city staff in between the January fourth meeting where this subdivision was was held by the Planning Commission and today's February first meeting. The applicant has agreed to provide sidewalks on Old Fairview Road, one of the roads that are adjacent to this subdivision. And that is the primary change between the last time this was viewed and today. I can share my screen and show that for you. But again, for the purposes of the Planning Commission, their request is to annex into the city limits of Fountain Inn and to zone upon annexation R ten residential district, which would allow a subdivision as currently laid out and as public record through Greenville County to be added to the city limits. With that, I can share my screen or provide any additional comments or context for this request. And staff's recommendation, as was before, was to recommend approval to Fountain Inn City Council for annexation of this property despite some non-conformance with city Fountain Inn standards.
Any questions for Mr. Gortos?
I mean, the one, the talking point last time was he wanted sidewalks on North Nelson and Old Fairview. And just to clarify for the board that doesn't know, they've agreed to the Old Fairview side, but not the North Nelson. That's correct.
Yes, sir, that's correct. The applicant submitted a revised preliminary plat that shows the actual five foot sidewalks on Old Fairview Road. So it's a revised preliminary document showing that they could put that there as well as a statement from the property owner. Mark Three Properties that they are willing to do so, which was a sticking point before, we didn't know if they would, they would accept that condition upon annexation, but that plat does not show sidewalks on North Nelson.
So they're, so they're not showing it on the plat, but they're, they are agreeing to do that or no?
They're indicating a plat documents on one road frontage and not the other.
I thought that was, I understood that they were going to do both.
Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
See the plaque? Okay, yeah, they have shown on a revised plat, the five foot sidewalks along Old Fairview right here.
But they are not willing to do them on Nelson?
I can provide some insight on that, guys.
Thank you.
So this was originally permitted, as Greg said, through Greenville County. We weren't trying to dodge Fountain Inn in any way at that point in time, but we were just recently interested in the opportunity of annexing into Fountain Inn. But we, they experienced some costs with rock on the site and some offsite infrastructure that has just made their cost margins so thin. Our client has agreed to pay for a hundred percent of the sidewalks on Old Fairview Road, but just cost wise, they just can't put them along Nelson too.
And just for clarification for anyone in the audience, again, this is unique circumstance where annexation is being sought after the subdivision's been planted, where there's just a raw vacant piece of land within city limits or someone seeking to annex prior to, that would need to comply fully with city standards.
Greg, I guess, do we have any public comment on this docket number?
All public comment was warranted through the link to the agenda that was posted on the website. Staff did not receive any written comment or emailed comment for this particular agenda item. There could still be members of the public on the line who could raise their hand or through other form of notifying themselves if they would speak. But no written comment was received for this docket number.
Okay, Sean, if you can monitor that for a minute before we made the board discussion, if you see any hands go up.
Yeah, members of the public, if you're viewing this virtual meeting as an attendee and you are wishing to speak on this docket number, just raise your virtual hand and I will get to you. I see several council members in attendance, so I don't think they're speaking on this docket and a few other residents that I recognize their name, I think, are viewing other dockets. So I don't believe we have any.
Okay, with that being the case, we'll go ahead and close public comment and just open it up in board discussion. I guess I'm still, for other members, I'm still in the same boat I was last time without the North Nelson Drive sidewalks. To me, it doesn't comply with our standards and I can't, personally can't accept it being annexed in the city without sidewalks on North Nelson.
I agree with you, Aaron. I'm sure if we dug into it, there'd be some other things we'd find, look to follow Fountain Inn zoning ordinance if they came to Fountain Inn from the beginning. And I really want to stick to the sidewalk point. I want Fountain to be walkable and on the North Nelson side. I understand there's costs to it. I understand there's costs that come back. And so like where I'm in the same position, you know, they've come and it's okay, we'll do North Fairview. And so, you know, I'm on the fence, do I want to say just no right now or go back one more time and pause this to give them one more time to say, okay, well, you do. If you do the whole thing, I'm interested. It's, I just want to see them follow that rule for Fountain Inn. So do we table it? Table it's the word, do we table or do we just, do I say no? That's my point where I am this moment.
And I guess my question would be the director, the Sean or Mr. Holmes, as far as now that we're in board discussion, I mean, is that something that we can get back with applicant online and ask her thoughts on that before we move to any kind of decision?
Mr. Chairman, you could ask the applicant. I will just tell you that it is better for you to table it than to vote it down. Because if you table it, you know, it'll come back up next month.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion from the board before we potentially have a motion?
So if we, if we motion say no, then we're going to, they're going to have to resubmit an application and go through that whole process again.
Correct.
Yeah. I'm good with tabling this, but it wants to make a motion.
I'll make the motion to table docket number zero zero two pertaining to North Nelson Drive.
A second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor would say aye, opposed. Thank you, motion curious. Moving on, we're going to move to docket number FI dash twenty twenty one dash zero zero three. This is a request to annex and zone to R fifteen residential district, tax map number zero five 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 zero three zero one zero one zero zero three, approximately eight point two acres on Jones Mill Road. The applicant would be Steve Cox with Fountain Inn Museum. Sean, do you know if we've got anybody representing the museum on the call?
I don't recognize anybody from the Fountain Inn Museum board on the line, and I do not see Steve Cox.
Okay, that being the case, we'll go ahead and move to city staff report, Mr. Gortos.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. This would be docket number FI twenty twenty one dash zero zero three with the property location being on Jones Mill Road. The tax map number zero five 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 zero three zero one zero one zero zero three, approximately eight acres within unincorporated Greenville County zoned RS residential suburban. The applicant Fountain Inn Museum, Inc. is requesting annexation and to rezone to R fifteen residential district. The reason for the rezoning is not so much that they want to change the category or use in any way. It's simply that Fountain Inn does not have a residential suburban zoning category, and so they had to pick something else. This is the closest comparable zoning category to residential suburban that the city of Fountain Inn has. It's currently the location of the old stone mill or Jones Mill that is several centuries old. Otherwise, the rest of the eight acres is vacant or unutilized at this time. There's just the one structure, mill structure on the property. As far as surrounding uses, everything around it is either a rural residential or an agricultural character other than the adjacent city zoning. So this property is subject to annexation because of its proximity to the Eagle Springs Plan Development. And that's the Parkland Hills or Rockbridge Cove subdivision under construction immediately north of this property, just north of the creek. So while most cases we would be growing, Fountain Inn would be growing outwards from the central downtown. This is actually growing south from the Parkland Hills subdivision towards this eight acres. And that creates the adjacency along the creek. The adjacent zoning throughout is either that RS residential suburban in the county, the planned development or PD zoning in the city. Or the other nearby subdivision that's within the city of Fountain Inn is Braxton Ridge, and that is zoned F R D, Flexible Review District. As stated, that the applicant is the Fountain Inn Museum, they submitted an application for annexation. With not a lot of context, there was no site plan, there were no development plans submitted as part of that application. It was simply the annexation form for the eight acres to request annexation into the city of Fountain Inn. I know there was newspaper articles and other discussions regarding what might happen on this property. And I were to remind the planning commissioners, what is subject to recommendation tonight is simply is R fifteen residential district, the appropriate zoning for the property that allows for single family homes and public parks and then as well as private park or other uses, unconditional use or what we call special exception. And then if the eight acres make sense to be annexed into the city of Fountain Inn. So with that, because there's no intended or future use for any foreseeable future, it's just to see if that property could be annexed in the city of Fountain Inn. The staff's recommendation is to approve the annexation and it to be rezoned R fifteen residential district upon annexation in city limits. With that, I'm available for any questions or comments.
Any questions for Mr. Gortos at this time? Hearing none at the moment, we'll go ahead and Sean, if you facilitate any public comment at this time.
I know there have been some emailed correspondence sent directly to Greg. I believe he's going to handle that first.
As Mr. Administrator, Commissioners, we received three correspondence of public comment regarding this item via email. Many of those were received Sunday or today. If you recall, some of our COVID nineteen procedures last year, because this is limited and City Hall is not available to the public due to this horrible virus, that I agree that I would read any submitted comments allowed. So I asked those folks today if they wished that I read their emails basically verbatim for public knowledge and public comment, and they requested that I do so. So I will read these for a period of several minutes. Again, this is the direct email message from these citizens or community members of Fountain Inn. This, this isn't coming from me, so if you need clarification on what comes from them or what's from staff, just know that I'm reading it verbatim and I can clarify any statements made. The first comment was submitted on Sunday from a William Sloan with the subject line of Old Jones Mill Annexation Opposition. All three of these public comments are in opposition to the annexation. The email states, "This tract beside Old Jones Mill has been in our families for as long as that mill has been sitting where it is now. Here are our concerns with what is proposed. Noise pollution associated with an amphitheater, a magnet for crime, hunting right next door to Greenville County property, traffic, street light pollution, further disrupt the wildlife, unintended consequences. Restoring the mill sounds great, but making a big central piece of future development and urban sprawl is not. It seems you are simply applying pressure to longstanding landowners. We are not going to alter our life one bit here. We do not believe this land donated to the museum out of good faith and a revocable trust needs to be annexed into the city of Fountain Inn. Traffic is already a nightmare. The residents on Jones Mill Road do not feel our interests are in mind here. We feel we do not have any representation within Fountain Inn, being that we are county residents. With all that said, I am one hundred percent in favor in the restoration of the old Jones Mill. We all are. I have been visiting the mill since I was a kid and my dad before me and his dad before him. I even take my three-year-old down to the mill from time to time. We would love for others to experience the history of the old Jones Mill. We would love to see the mill brought back to life. However, we do not want to park with an amphitheater in our backyard. I'm not sure who would. If these things are to be packaged together as an all for nothing deal, then we will oppose both. We do not believe you need a nine acre park on annexed property on the outskirts of town for the sake of preserving history. It feels more like a plan to divide and conquer county land than a bid to preserve the history of Fountain Inn. The optics are not good. We will fight this at every turn, Taylor Sloan." The second email correspondence was also sent on Sunday evening titled Planning Commissioner. It says, "Greg, concerning the annexation of the old Jones Mill, our family and neighbors are against this annexation by the city. Let me be clear, we are not against the preservation project of the mill. However, this spot zoning is going to cause a lot of issues in our small community. The traffic is already very bad on Jones Mill now. After the two subdivisions in our area are finished and also the new high school, it's only going to get worse. We do not live in city limits, nor do we care to. After my social media post yesterday, it appears many people in the area are in agreement with us. We feel that an amphitheater and a park in the small area is not needed. We strongly object to the proposed plans and ask if anyone on council has any questions, refer to their Facebook posts on January thirty first, regards Andy and Tracy Sloan." The third public comment was received today, February first. It's titled Jones Mill Annexing. It asks, "I have several questions and concerns regarding this. Why would the city consider annexing property that is in the floodplain? Has the city considered the traffic nightmare it will be for homeowners around it? At times, it's bad enough already. Has the city taken into consideration the situation, the amount of trash, glass and metal washing down the creek? That could be potential lawsuits for anyone involved. Nine acres is not enough property for all the proposed plans, park, walking trails and amphitheater. Why would the city consider approving grants or taxpayer money that could be used to better, that could be put to better use elsewhere? And it's the last thing needed in a small area around the mill. And back to property being in the floodplain, it would take a lot of backfill to raise out of the floodplain. If not for the upkeep of the city, on the park, park utilities, walking trails, all would be great. Every time a good rain comes through, again, wasting taxpayer resource, wasting tax resources, excuse me, that could be put in, put in better places, James Gibbs." So these are adjacent property owners stating their objections to the proposed annexation.
Is there anyone else on this virtual public hearing tonight that wishes to speak in either favor or opposition to the annexation? If so, please raise your digital hand. Mr. Chairman, I don't see any other folks wishing to speak at this time.
This time we'll go ahead and close public comment and move into board discussion.
I mean, Greg, his initial point there of that, you know, is this appropriate zoning for this parcel? You know, does it make sense for the Fountain Inn City? You know, a lot of the public comment is stuff that's after this, that's, that's not really what we're evaluating here. It's, is this their proper zoning and is it appropriate for Fountain Inn? I think a park is cool. I like parks in Fountain Inn. I like to get more in our city. And so I like that part, but if I'm just looking at, is R fifteen appropriate? Yes. Does this make sense for Fountain Inn City? We have a parcel right next door that's a subdivision. And so as, as the future land use, use map is our path forward, it meets all three of those. And so, you know, that's all positives to bring this into the city, in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, just some thoughts I've got on it. I mean, it's not, it's not necessarily anything that's going to generate revenue for the city. It would be, it would be an expense, but now that it touches other city property, the fact that if it is in fact annexed and zoned, you know, it gives the city some control as far as, you know, cleanliness of the site, it gives them an avenue to make sure that it's, that it's not rundown. And, you know, the appeal from the street, you know, stays, stays intact. I like, I like that aspect of it.
But we, so they just filled out the application, but we don't really, they don't really have an explanation of the why or the reasoning?
I believe so. Is that, I think that's what Greg says. Is that, is that correct, Greg or Sean?
I can speak to the application portion. So annexation in the state of South Carolina is strongly contingent on the actual property owner and in fact, one hundred percent of the property owners asking the city to be annexed. So this isn't something that the city pushes on anyone or willfully chooses if the property owner is opposed. The, the way that staff receives annexations is the property owner signs a document saying that I wish to be a part of the city of Fountain Inn limits. Staff verifies that it's adjacent to those limits and the public hearing is set and advertised for at least thirty days. So staff doesn't or shouldn't choose who is annexed or what their zoning is. We just receive, receive the application. And in regards to land use and zoning, just applies to any circumstance. And what you're factoring is, should it be within city limits? Is it close enough to make sense for the provision of resources as, as a municipality? Is the zoning appropriate? So if someone is, for instance, if you were rezoned for an R fifteen So if someone is, for instance, if you were rezoned for an R15 or R7.5 residential category, the actual annexation rezoning is that staff validating the, the way that the houses are laid out in any way. It simply is, is that density appropriate and should it be in the city? So the same applies here. If they want to build a single-family home on it or they wish to do a public park, those are things allowed. And that R15 zoning category, if it's to become something much larger, some commercial use, it would have to be rezoned.
So all we're basically approving is the, approving the request for annex and then the, the, the change to R2, R15 because it's coming into our city limits.
That's correct.
I mean, the only, the only negative I see is just the fact that the city's not going to get any revenue generation for, you know, police, trash service, whatever. But I mean, I, other than that, I don't see anything to argue against it. That decision is not going to affect one way or the other, any of the public comments that I've heard before.
So ultimately the issue, if someone has issue with the development of the property itself, it's with the owner of the land.
Right. But right now it's sitting Greenville Incorporated and eventually that landowner is going to want to do something with, with that, with that land. I mean, whether they want to annex to us or, or, you know, Greenville, they're going to want to develop it some way. And with, with it sitting, you know, with us having an opportunity to annex it and zone it R15. So it could be a park, could be another subdivision, sitting right next to an existing subdivision anyway. So. Understand what the other landowners are talking, they're speaking to, but I mean, there's lots of pros there.
Alright, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the annexation and the zoning of our 15.
Here's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
There's a motion, a second. I'll pose in favor. As opposed, motion carries. Move on to next docket number is going to be FI dash 2021-004. This is a request to annex and zone 2R12 Residential District. Two tax map numbers. The first is going to be 056-2020-100201. The second number being 056-2010102910. It's approximately 139.2 acres on Parsons Road. John or Greg, do we know if the applicant is on?
Yes, the applicant is.
We can take any comments from the applicant, but this time Gray Engineering.
Good afternoon. My name is Beverly Wilks Howard for Gray Engineering. What you have before you, excuse me, um, is the annexation of an approximately 140-acre parcel of land to R12 Residential District. It, the intent of the property is to be subdivided as a residential subdivision property. Actually can tell, it's actually split by Parsons Road. A large majority of the tax map is on the left side with the remaining acreage on the right. The intent is to develop both sides along Parsons Road. Knowing the nature of Parsons Road and having driven out there myself a few times, I know that the concern of Parsons Road is how narrow it is. The developer has committed to actually widening that road from Wilson Bridge all the way down to 418. So that's over a mile of road widening. I think in some spots that road can get down to 16-foot. And there's already been a verbal commitment to the city as well to widen that to a minimal of 22-foot wide. Additionally, I know traffic is the main point of concern with any subdivision that comes before you. Once we know if we're allowed to annex into the city or not, the developer has already gotten traffic proposals as far as doing a traffic study. So at the next stage of this process, then that will come before you at that point. Typically those have about a 30 to 45-day lead time. So basically we're just waiting to kind of go through this meeting until we pull the trigger on that. But mainly I am here to answer any questions that you have. This does fit perfectly within the master plan. It's in that medium-low-density residential category, which is typical of anything that is, will be near an industrial area, which I know is important to the city. And so this will be great for commuters going to and from work. And like I said, with the upgrade of Parsons Road, there will be a traffic study done as well. I do think that this would be a good fit for the city of Fountain Inn and this can only be a good asset to the city as well. But I can answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? We'll go ahead and take city staff. Their comments.
Thank you, Chairman Hood stated this is now at docket number FI 2021-004. The applicant just spoke, representing Gray Engineering and the property location is on both sides of Parsons Road. A large tract that would be subject to that R12 Residential District zoning is 139.2 acres and it is tax map number In order to create a connection to existing Fountain Inn City Limits, there's also a second tax map number and part of that tax map number ending at 2910. Be a strip of land following the creek bed down to SC 418 and Jenkins Bridge Road. So to be clear, the annexation request is for both. But in order to connect to city limits, there's an annexation strip or connector strip to larger 139 acres. This property is currently vacant and in fact was formerly wooded and that, that lumber has been cleared from most of the site. There's also a very large vacant tract of land just north of this property on Parsons Road. To the south and towards where the annexation contiguity would occur, there are several small, single-family lots or homes, some rural residential in character, nature homes. And then there's a properties zone on Service District. And that's industrial in nature and that's currently immediately south of this site on Parsons. So there's a mix of land uses out there as well as a lot of large tracts of vacant land. Zoning varies as well. We have residential suburban zoning, that Greenville County category. We have property-zoned FRD, Flexible Review District. That's a large subdivision proposed north of this site on Wilson Bridge Road. And then there's a subdivision proposed south of this proposal, south of 418, known as Briar Gate and Cedar Gap. So there are two other large residential proposals that Planning Commissioners should be familiar with, both north and south of this site. Again, the property is located on both sides of Parsons Road, which is a Greenville County maintained road. Most of this roads in the city Fountain Inn are owned and maintained by SEDOT. Much of the just subdivision roads or internal roads for Fountain Inn are owned by the city Fountain Inn and maintained by the, by the city. But this is a county road as we are expanding westward. As the entire county is expanding, this is going out into roads under the maintenance of Greenville County. The applicant is seeking annexation in order to rezone from RS Residential Suburban to that R12 Residential District and construct a single-family subdivision in two sections, one on both sides of the road. There's significant floodplain on this parcel, particularly on the westernmost portion. So anything built here would not take up the entire 139 acres. Much of that would be left alone due to floodplain or topographic constraints. That said, the proposed use and zoning for single-family residential zone or single-family residential homes under that R10 and R12, in this case Residential District, meets our future land use map. Our future land use map is found in your staff report and in our 2017 Fountain and Master Plan shows that this area is appropriate for medium-to-low density residential uses. There's some tracks to the north that are more appropriate for industrial and there are other tracks on 418 that are appropriate for commercial, which they're in use as right now. As well as the Fox Hill Business Park on 418, that's suitable for industrial. But this specific parcel is indicated as medium-low-density residential on our future land use map. That's what R12 is considered. It's considered medium-to-low density. That said, you know, we know that density can be achieved through conserving land otherwise on the property through the open space subdivision category. So while this is a low-density residential, any residential subdivision built here could achieve lots that are smaller in width than 60 feet or of a smaller lot size than 12,000 square feet. So just recognize that it's low-density, not high lot size. So it meets our future land use map. So we know that growth is occurring in this area due to a re-wa sewer line throughout the entire area. And that's why we're seeing these subdivisions on Wilson Bridge Road to the north and on SC 418 to the south. So this matches that growth that's occurring in the area naturally and it meets that future land use map. Just the main sticking point for staff is that, A, it's reaching connection to city limits through survey strip and annexation strip. It's, it's only touching city limits through that method and would by far be our most westward expansion of city limits. And then two, that by Parsons Road being a county road, if we annex on both sides, at least that portion of the road should be ceded to city of Fountain Inn control. That would, if that whole road is developed, that would become a city road, not a county road for all intents and purposes. And if this kind of residential growth that's possible on Parsons is fulfilled, that's a lot more cars, a lot more traffic on a road that is currently 18 feet wide or even as applicant stated, 16 feet in portions. A driveline should be at least nine or 10 in order to be safe. So staff's recommendation per the staff report provided to you all was to hold recommendation of annexation until the traffic study has been completed. So we acknowledge that residential is appropriate for this location. We acknowledge that it meets the future land use map. But because of this expansion of city services, growing westward and possible maintenance of a future road on Parsons Road, planning staff feels we just need more information from the applicant to know if this is appropriate to recommend to city council. With that said, a development agreement or even a verbal confirmation from the applicant would be beneficial in, in asserting those fears. If we know that they're going to widen Parsons Road, staff can recommend this annexation.
Believe David Holmes had, had a question.
Mr. Chairman, the, the issue about the roads needs to be addressed. The applicant has indicated a willingness to pave the road, but the question I had that I think you all need to get answered is whether or not the applicant has the rights of way necessary to do that widening all the way out to 418.
Yes, sir. That was going to be my question. There's quite a number of parcels that would be involved in that. Ms. Wilks, are you able to answer that at all?
I say if I may, typically on every Greenville County roadway, especially on a roadway this size, it's normally a prescriptive right-of-way, so it's going to be ditch to ditch, which I would anticipate giving us the allowable additional, we would widen on both sides of the road. People would typically refer to it as a slot widening, so it would be two foot on one side, two foot on the other, which normally pretty much lines you up to the standard ditch that would typically be there. So we should have the room to widen.
John, do we have any public comment on this one or Greg?
I, I don't believe so.
Staff has not received any written public comment for this, this item.
Not seeing any hands go up on Zoom call.
Yeah, I only see council members and I believe the property owner.
That being said, we'll go ahead and move to board discussion.
So Greg, I mean, you, with, with what the statement she's made about widening the road and, and their kind of verbal agreement, do you feel comfortable with that or would you still like to have that traffic impact study performed?
I think the, you know, the applicant basically said that they would want to do one anyway. Should this proceed with this meeting tonight? You know, what that traffic impact study states, I don't know and I don't know the impact, but I do know that this is connected road between two other SEDOT roads, Wilson Bridge Road and SC 418. That's a lot of development impact. So this road essentially is the spine that connects those two. What form those assurances are from the developer, I think is important because it's annexation. So if this was already in city limits, it was already within our service area. Many of these traffic issues would be worked out on their own as part of the development process. But because this involves us having to physically expand city limits by another 140 acres and it involves us annexing a portion of this road, I think it's appropriate for the Planning Commission and the city council to ask these questions before they decide to annex. Part of those questions could be answered by that traffic study.
Normally we'd see a traffic study at, at the subdivision advisory, from the subdivision advisory committee. So that, that would be a natural part. I'm lost. Well, how is that ever a natural part of the development process? If we annex this, you know, that's going to be part of the next steps, isn't it?
That's correct. Yeah, typically the traffic impact study is, is when you're laying out the subdivision. Not necessarily when you're zoning the property. It's just because it's such a large tract and its location. Staff would always want that information soon rather than later, but you're correct in that. Any of those traffic impact studies or those traffic concerns are predicated on what the actual layout of the subdivision is.
So I mean, if the board, if the board decided, you know, that was the best course of action. I mean, is this something that we just need to table until that traffic study is in hand?
Sorry, Aaron, are you asking me or, or the, the board?
Sorry, that was, sorry, that was to you, Greg.
I mean, that was our, that was the original recommendation, the, the recommendation as it was stated. Was to hold recommendation until a traffic study had been completed. So that was what staff felt was appropriate. That said, you know, I, we do have the verbal assurance from the property owner that they would widen to twenty two feet. We should hold them to that. We do have a statement from the applicant tonight. Traffic impact study is, is ready to be conducted. So I feel a bit better about that position and about a recommendation. But the original recommendation, the staff report was to hold.
Mr. Holmes, what would your thoughts be on the two things that I guess that stick out to me is? A verbal commit and then also a comment of should have what we need for right away with those two. Not necessarily.
The, the motion, if the motion is to approve, I would add two conditions to that motion. Condition number one is that the applicant must pay, widen. That Parsons Road as they've indicated tonight. And that widening would be consistent with the city's L D R. Number two is that the applicant must also provide the city with some evidence that it has the necessary right of way. To do the, the widening. I'll just tell all of you, I just made an attempt to look at the Greenville County G I S map. That's always dangerous. The G I S map is not a survey. The paved surface of the road does appear to be, does have some ability to be widened if that G I S map is correct. But I think the applicant needs to come forward with that. Because I also do work for another government entity that has frequently been burned. When it came time to do the actual paving, that there wasn't the, the necessary rights of way. So that needs to be looked into. So I would make the motion with those two conditions.
I mean, for me personally, it's, that's a lot of, a lot of conditions. I would feel better about tableing it. Especially if you're going to be waiting on a traffic study anyways.
I'm, I'm good with going with staff recommendation. Like you said, you can table this and then come back instead of. Instead of making a motion to approve with those conditions.
We can table and then waiverly, you can kind of get that information back, maybe get a next docket so we can see all that data showing that right away.
Yeah, we'll be happy to provide that.
I, I think that's good. So I'll, I'll make a motion to table this.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Motion and a second to table the docket number. All those in favor? So yeah. So motion carries. I've been informed that the remaining two docket numbers. On our agenda for tonight, for need of additional information have been requested to be tabled. So that wraps up everything that is currently on our docket. With that being said, thank you, everybody. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Thanks, guys.
See you, guys.
See ya.